Good evening and welcome to Blount County Public Library Board of Trustees' Monthly Meeting. We appreciate all of you being here with us this evening and taking time out of your busy schedules. I'm Stephanie Thompson, I'm the Vice Chair. Andy Simon is out of town, and I think he'll be out of town next month. But July 1, I'll be the Chairman, so hopefully I'll be here on, on, yes, no. We also have a couple of other board members that are out of town. In a few minutes, we'll come to the part on the agenda for public input, and I think Summer's already asked if there's anybody else that wants to participate in that. When you come to the podium, you would come up to the podium when we call your name and give us your name and address. We would really appreciate that. And Summer will be timing for two minutes, and at 30 seconds, we have 30 seconds remaining. She'll kind of let you know and give you a seat. Once that portion of the meeting is over, then we will start with our agenda. And you're welcome to stay and watch. Again, we welcome you tonight, and we will start our meetings. First of all, I'd like to welcome everyone, staff, and everyone else here. Do I have a motion? I'm hoping everybody had a chance to read the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? Or do we have any corrections that need to be made?
Summer has already corrected her, but instead of April, it should be May. But I will take that motion to accept her minutes with that one correction.
All in favor? Do you have a vote? Okay, the minute for our approval. At this time, I'd like to introduce some of our guests. We have staff here. DeBarn from our Friends of the Library, and Liz Schrick, and Chad Hampton from the Foundation. So we welcome you all and welcome the staff that are here. At this time, we would like to see, we have some people who would like to make some positive comments. So Forrest Erickson, if you would come to the podium, please.
Alrighty, is it on this time?
Yeah.
Alrighty, I am Forrest Erickson, a resident of Blount County in the Cloverhill subdivision. And I come to speak in favor of vigorous competition in the marketplace of ideas. Members of the public have demanded that books they do not like should be restricted or even removed from our schools and here at the public library. At the June 1 Board of Education meeting, I addressed a request for a return to Bible studies in the schools and pointed out that, published in 2006, Richard Dawkins', The God Delusion, sold millions. Published in 2007, Christopher Hitchens', God is Not Great was the New York Times bestseller. A fair slice of the American public knows enough, and some are not going to let opportunities pass to ask very tough questions in a Bible studies class. Is Hitchens right when he argues religion poisons everything? A good library will have both of these books. But I would go further. A good library needs books that examines religion's role in defending slavery and Jim Crow in America. Warranting close examination as the role of churches of the Southern Baptist Convention. Just how did they get this moral question so very wrong for so very long? It was not until 1995 that the Southern Baptist Convention admitted to this grave error. I also want to read about how they will ensure they found the root cause of this moral error so that they will not make future errors against other persons. Will books at the Blount County Public Library help us understand this very grave error? I hope my questions help everyone understand the importance of vigorous competition and examination of ideas in the marketplace and why we need more and not fewer challenging books.
Marge Meredith? Did you say mister? No, I said thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, I'm Marge Meredith, I live in Blount County on Thomas Avenue. And I just want to say this, this quick thing. First of all, I appreciate this library so much. I think that you all are doing a great job. I don't have any problem with where the books are or what books there are, and my children have never had a problem. But one thing that happened here two months ago was the first time I heard of it, and it really floored me and it upset me so badly. But that was when a certain individual who seems intent to sow discontent in our community started attacking a place to stay. Now, that, everyone that I've talked to across the spectrum thinks that that is such a great idea. What a wonderful thing for us to offer to the community. And why would we charge rent to an organization that is trying to better the lives of the people that are down on their luck? I know we can't, we're not going to mix religion in here, but in fact, as a Christian, and a lot of this stuff that's being addressed is being supposedly put through that spectrum of Christianity, we are biblically charged to care for the homeless. We are biblically charged. We are told to feed them and take them into our homes. Well, if we can't even, I think it's really important that we continue the work in the library that we've been doing with letting, having this organization be here until they can grow and find a bigger place. So that's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you all for what you're doing.
Keela Paulson?
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Keela Paulson, and I live in Blount County on Wildwood Road, if you need to know exactly. A couple of things. First, I would like to read the mission statement and the vision for our library. I'm sure you all know it, but just in case folks don't. The mission statement is to empower residents to think, act, and aspire by providing opportunities to connect to our community, participate in lifelong learning, and explore the world at large. And the vision is that we work towards building a sustainable community by celebrating history, creating connections, and inspiring imagination. So last month, there was a conversation here that was tabled about whether or not the library should have rental spaces for organizations such as a place to stay and be aware once. So our library provides a plethora of events for folks in our community to live out the library's mission and the vision by providing these opportunities for people to connect to resources. It's so important. And our library is a safe place for those things to happen. And Be Aware Blount and a Place to Stay do really provide essential resources to some of the most valuable and vulnerable folks in our community. Their presence here in the library is important, and it's necessary. And so is any other agency or organization that really embodies the mission and vision of the library. So I think they should be here. Thanks for that so much.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move on, on the agenda. Board of Board, just a couple of things. We met with the architect from Johnson today, and I've asked Greg to kind of give a summary of that meeting. You good, Greg?
Sure. We met this morning, myself, Manny, and Angenee, Stephanie, Denny Garner from the county.
Dawn.
Dawn, oh yeah. And basically met the architect and described the remodeling work that happened at the book sorting machine, which is the silver structure on the end of the building that's going to go away. And then we reconfigured the wall there to put this. Bibiltecha, Bibiltecha is the name of the machine that sorts, automatically sorts books that have a barcode, and reads it and sends it down a conveyor rail and drops it in the bin for restocking the books. So, so the architect will do the drawings and get the design on paper approved, and then it'll go out for bid. And then the contractor will affect the work. The machine will be here probably this fall, September-ish sometime. So there's, you know, a few months worth of work to prepare the building to receive that machine. And then we'll have to reconfigure the sides, move the light pole, change the drive access way, that sort of thing. So it'd just be a bit of minor inconvenience for a few weeks while that's being done. We don't know the cost yet, that'll happen after it's put out for bid. And slates will be made after that.
Thank you. Andy and Manny met this past week, I think, with Lamar Alexander, and Manny's got that in his report, so he'll report that at that time. And just a reminder that the new hours for the library, the, being open on Sunday as well, will begin on July 17. So, Manny, you want to go get your report?
First thing I do want to, I want to acknowledge and thank Mayor Mitchell and his administrative team, the commission, as well as the finance department, the human resources. They have been working extremely hard over the past few months over a compensation study. And last Thursday, the commission did vote in favor of, number one, our budget for our upcoming fiscal year, but also the compensation study. And that really meant a lot to me. Staff here is absolutely incredible and hardworking. And their salary increase is very much well deserved. So I do want to thank the commission, and again, thank you to all those involved for not only the budget, but also the compensation study. Couple of weeks ago, we had Touch a Truck here at the library, and it was an absolute success. It was very hot that day. And the estimates as far as attendees were between 900, 1,000, 1,100. There were a lot of people here. There was a sea of people here, and it was fantastic. I do want to thank everybody that was involved, especially the city of Merrillville with their public safety vehicles, as well as our youth services staff. It was a job well done. We recently had a concert, the Grace Notes Flute Ensemble, back on May 18. We had a very good crowd for that. And if you have a chance, if you could go over to Adult Services, there's some ongoing services and activities that they have there, including a puzzle table, a greeting cod making station, cookie pan rentals, and coloring. Over at collection development, Kathy did a tremendous job summarizing, kind of like the end of the fiscal year. This is the time of the year that we're doing weeding, sorting the collection. And in the report, and I won't read it verbatim, she does a wonderful job explaining what exactly the weeding process is. So if you get a chance, please read her, her summary was excellent. With school being out, the cafe has seen an uptick as far as traffic, which is great for Chelsea and everyone involved there. So if you get a chance, please stop by the cafe as well. Chelsea and her entire crew there did such a tremendous job. Also, in patron services, the display every month is incredible. And this month ties in with our collaborative summer reading program altogether now. And that's in conjunction with Jenna Bush, Hager, as well as the collaborative summer reading program. Everyone that's involved in that, they do such a great job, and they're so creative, because I have no creative bone in my body. So I admire people doing what they can do during a board display like that. Every month, they outdo themselves. So if you get a chance, please take a look at that. And I'm pretty positive that next month, we will have a record-breaking new cards for the month of June, because we are on target to be written that record. Over in public relations, we had an experiment with Patron Point with summer, with summer reading emails. And it was up to the patron to subscribe to be part of the summer reading listserv, which is excellent, because right now, we're at a 77.8 read rate, which is excellent. That means that they are reading our emails, our communications. So Patron Point is definitely working and in our favor. The roof project is done. So thank you for all those involved. General services and the commission as well, and the mayor's office, so we are done. When you get a chance to, when you, I, there's a lot of things I'd like you to do after the meeting. Check out the display, go over to Adult Services. But as soon as you leave, I want you to look on your left. I want you to see these maps, and they're on temporary loan from Lamar Alexander. And these maps date back to the mid to late 1700s. And Adult Services is working on having little, few sentences detailing each map. If you get a chance, take, take a look at that. Like Stephanie said, I got, I got the chance to actually go to Mr. Alexander's home and look at his extensive collection with Sam Houston memorabilia, as well as his as well. And we are working with Vanderbilt University, the Archivist, and there is going to be a display starting in the summer. One, one display case will have Lamar Alexander archives, and the other one will have Sam Houston, as they are both were Blount County, or current Blount County residents and former governors of the state. Mr. Alexander has some really unique artifacts from Sam Houston, including a walking stick with the Lone Star on top of the walking stick. So we got that to look forward to. We met with the Vanderbilt people last week via Zoom, so we're moving forward with that. We talked about the AMH, the Book Return Sorting Unit. And then this afternoon, we met with Bibiltech as well. When it comes to the remote locker, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Mayor Pugh and everyone involved in Lewisville about the remote locker. And it was her recommendation that we have the remote locker outside the building. And those are some really good reasons. The town of Lewisville, their town hall is limited amount of hours. It's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, 8:30 to 4:30. And then Wednesday, Friday is 8:30 to 1:30. So it's limited amount of time. They do have the space and the ability to have the remote locker outside. What's great about it too is right next door is their public safety building as well. So we met today, and the plan is, again, this, we're looking at September as well for that as well. Thank all those involved with that project. Looking forward to it, and we would be the first in Tennessee to have this remote locker.
Very cool.
So the budget, we are closing up our books as we speak, and we are sitting pretty with our budget. Entertain any questions that you may have.
Do you know any estimate on money added to unbalance at this point? Any?
Not until the year's closed down. And the year will be truly closed down after they perform the audit, so around October.
So I understand the commission's rejected your request to increase staff.
Correct.
Can you tell me how many staffers did you add for an COVID-19 outbreak?
So I asked for four additional staff, two full-time and two part-time. And they would specifically be, majority would be working in patron services, because that seems to be the hub, that's the, the busy section of the library. As soon as you walk in the main entrance, the check-in and checkout corner, the service desk are right there. So that was my motive behind it. We also had one of the full-time positions. They were still going to work handling the accounting portion, but also work a limited amount of hours in patron services, just to give everyone up there more staffing, you know? Because we are, we are short-staffed, and I, you know, that, that's just a broken record at this point. But it's true, and if someone calls out or is on vacation, kind of gets to be a little tight at times. I presented the budget, and I did speak with a member of the finance team, and they thought I did a really good job and a really good reason for the new staff. But at this time, they are not doing, or they're not having any additional positions. And they've already given me a heads up that next year will be the same thing.
That across, across the board?
That's what they told me, yeah. So I don't know if there's, yeah, that's what they told me.
So that put us in a difficult position in terms of managing what we have to do with the new hours?
It, it does, no, I mean, we can still open those hours. It's just going to be a little tighter. It's just, we're going to really have to focus on the service desk. That's why this book return system will definitely come into play once that's installed, because that portion, having staff go to the book drop and checking those, bringing them up to the service desk to check the materials in. They'll check them in as soon as it's entered into the book return slot. So that'll, that'll save some time there. And that, how, absolutely.
Remind me, is the cafe open on the weekend?
It is not.
It's not, and not with the new hours?
No, I think for special occasions, I booked for the mini-con that's coming, which is like a comic book convention. It'll be open for that, special occasions as well.
Any other questions for Manny? Thank you. A report of the foundation, Chad.
Thanks, Stephanie. Due to summer vacation schedules, we did not have a meeting for June. We have a small board, and so we're just going to meet, our next meeting's going to be July 21. Since I'll have reported to you, the main thing that the foundation did was meet with Michael Sermack, with Professor Goodson, who's our investment advisor. And so we reviewed our investment fund's performance for the last several years and reviewed our investment policy and considered making changes or not to that in the coming month. And then other than that, we're just sort of focusing on our development plan that we have established, and our goals for the next, in the summer are to get a donation letter out. And then try to finalize a plan giving page for the website. Other than that, I don't have a lot to report.
Thank you, too. Hi, did you, I wanted to follow up on the, the Memorial, the bus. Did you guys get ahold of the letter that was sent out?
I never saw the letter. I did talk to some people about the concerns from a couple of attorneys that, and concerns that they raised. And at this point, it's sort of going to hold, to sort of see, see where that go, see where that goes. Talked to Monica Gallett, she's hoping wants to go forward. But, but again, until we sort of resolve those issues and get everybody comfortable for a month, we don't want to do anything that, and the people who raised the concerns are people that you, that I respect tremendously. And so I want to make sure those are addressed before we move forward.
Any other questions for Chad? A report of Friends of the Library, Dave Barn.
We had our annual membership meeting early in June, and that included elections. So you're stuck with me for another year. I didn't think that'd kick me out, but you're certainly not. We had about 50 people, and we had a wonderful lunch. We did a year, the review of the year, and what we've, not only what we brought into, what we finally refer to as the book factory downstairs, but what we've been able to help the library with. So we had some great pictures from, from the website. And it was very profitable in terms of, one of the members who came said, "We seem like a very fun group," so he joined as a volunteer the next day. So we were really happy about that, because we're always happy to have volunteers. One of the other things that's come up and that I talked about at this meeting is that we're about to kick off corporate sponsorship. So we'll be using the Chamber of Commerce email list and sending out a blast looking for corporate sponsors. And there's different levels and different benefits that go with those levels, and we'll be putting, putting that out. We'll also have a kickoff event about the corporate sponsorship in August, August 2. So more information to come on that. At the beginning of June, coinciding with Touch a Truck, we had a very successful quarterly sale, making over $15,000, and we sold over 10,000 books. We had purchased new lights, and thanks to the county who helped install them downstairs. It is so much brighter down there. We have probably about 20 new LED lights up, and it is amazing. It doesn't look like a dungeon anymore. So we're very happy with that. And speaking of new volunteers, we had 20 new volunteers over the last two months. So we're very excited about that. eBay continues to blow us away with record sales every month this year, except for February. We're blaming that on the 28 days, but we said last year, it took us to June 15 to reach $50,000 in sales. This year, we were there on May 10. So we're, we're running $11,000 ahead of last year already. So it's, it's really rolling. The donations have been awesome, and, you know, just being a whole part of the process, we love it.
Thank you. Question for you, in terms of the corporate, please, how do you see that? Are you looking for corporate financial donors or corporate participation? How do you?
It'll be financial donors, and it'll be set on a tiered level, starting at, I think I called them silver, gold, and platinum. But it'll be ranging from $750 to $3,000. And we'll be offering, again, a bunch of different perks, like a private sale downstairs for the business and their employees, or a number of things that we're doing. So we're looking, we're hoping that we can reach some of the big organizations, Conic and Denso and some of the other companies to help fund the library, help fund the projects.
Thank you, Dave. A report of the Coey River Regional Library, Liz Schrick.
Oh, good to be with you all. So I distributed all these electronically, and then I brought you paper copies. I apologize for duplication, but if you'd like a copy here, you have one. So we are wrapping up our training and service offerings for the discipline here. Possibly approach the end of that on June 30. All of our folks, our member libraries are, of course, required to obtain a certain amount of hours. That is a part of regional membership. And so all staff, no matter if they work five hours, two hours, to 45 plus, all have to have some training. So we are wrapping that up, and they will be turning those statistics in on their quarterly report to us as of July 14, once we wrap up this quarter. So we're minded about that. Wanted to let the trustees know about the planned annual trustee workshop. And this may be the earliest we have ever had a date for this. So I want to go ahead and share that with you. Thursday, September 28 is the annual trustee workshop. And that is different, of course, from the 10 trustee certification online modules. This is a one-day workshop where we have different speakers, and we talk about interesting things. You get to network with other trustees from around the state, depending on who wants to come to our workshop, the one that's closest to us, of course, at the Arts Central Public Library in the coast. So definitely saved the date, announced it. Different reminders and upcoming deadlines. We have a lot of them for our libraries. I don't set these. Title VI survey is due, the training, all staff, on the title VI back past June 15. That was the deadline for all staff to have that done. And then there is a self-reporting survey at Certification Forum that's due by August 1st. So we're helping our libraries complete that. Also, the standards survey, we talk about the Tennessee State Standards for non-municipal and public libraries. That is due July 14. And we also have, of course, the fourth quarter report, which will be due July 14. And we are in the middle of tech grant applications for this next funding year. And the deadline for that is July 7. Have a little bit of a different process this year. Application will be sent to the regional assistant directors for an initial review, and then move them somewhere on to TES. So you'll send those to the N E of your applying for that. Um, let's see, we're, of course, always talk about trustee certification program. We're pushing for our boards to try to obtain 100% if you can by June 30. I know that's a really, we've been setting that date because that is the date that will maximize the benefit for tech grant awards for the library.
Is that a one-time thing?
Yes, you take it once, and you're certified for six years. Yes, yes. So if you needed help being registered for that, I can do that for you. I'd be happy to register you, so to take that one step away for you having to do that. We deliver those modules on Niche Academy, that's the button on the news. And speaking to that point, I have finally a certificate to present to Mr. Timothy Moore for completing his certification. And speaking to that point, I have finally a certificate to present to Mr. Timothy Moore for completing his certification. All right, once for a while. So we're, we're pleased whenever any, any of you all can take those and, and certify trustees. That's really mainly what I have, although I would like, on a happy note, the friends has been hitting lots of benchmarks here and high points. You will have the highest read circulation for the month of May that you've had all year, so that was twenty-two thousand four hundred and twelve for Tuscaloosa County, so pretty amazing. That's the regional, you've got an annual system. That's pretty amazing start there. And that's really all I have.
Thank you, Liz. Moving on. Many updates regarding the long-range plan, and we will start with Dawn Braven, Friends of the Library committee.
Well, I was glad to, I was glad to know that they got the lights done. That was a good thing, because that was the first thing we wanted to get done, so.
Right, that, that was good. I'll, I'll pass that today and let her talk about it.
So the, the risk management folks probably told us that we had to make sure that all corner was cleared out or the shelter should, shouldn't be needed. And we were thinking we could have like a little meeting room there, so we're sort of backed up. We met today, the sub-team, without Dawn, sorry. And we're sort of rewriting it a little bit and we'll be able to put the finishing touches on and have it no, no, no later than a week or so. Do you want to send to you or just wait for the next meetings?
Just, just send it. Send it.
Yeah, yeah.
Any, anything else?
No, I was just, I'm just tired to the, okay, she's just, I'm just happy about the lights. Great what an email will do.
Logan Field, Youth Services Committee, any update on your? Let's see, Lauren, do you have anything to share on your meeting?
No, we, we haven't met, but we did have, I did have a good conversation with John Clark and I'm regarding the cafe that Chelsea and Eric are gonna talk about too.
Let's say, Tim, you want to go next?
Yeah, so.
Tim's on technology.
Technology, computer area, and the reference section. So I've met several times with the reference librarian staff, Nikki Detwone. And I've gotten a good overview of kind of the current pain points and efficiencies and possibilities for improvement in both of those areas. So I have a working document I've created. I've started doing a background investigation on technology costs for upgrading the computers and what kind of the opportunities are for there. As an exploratory item right now. I also have an additional meeting planned for tomorrow with Blood County IT supervisor or director, I think. And Manny's gonna be in attendance of that, I believe, as well as Judith Bellum. And we're gonna do some more idea sessions from a county IT perspective, in addition, that I can then marry with the librarian perspective. And then from there, I'll be generating a working document that, for library management review as part of a three- to five-year strategy document. So we're, we're moving right along. I've got a lot of good ideas, a lot of good feedback has been generated so far, and I'm excited to produce a final work out of that, hopefully soon.
The committee that I was in part of, it's Studies Space Genealogy, Appalachian Studies, Level History and Offices. And it was the, it's the offices and not the offices here, it's the offices in the back part of the library around the reference section. And Kathleen Christie, Brennan Laquire, and Tim Walker with Blood County Genealogy Historical Society, we've met a couple of times shared documents back and forth, and I think they have shared the information with the rest of the staff and gotten feedback from the whole group. You've got a document there, and I'm not gonna read it. I'll, I'll just let you all go through and read it, but if you'll notice on the backside with the summary, there are some short-term recommendations and then some long-term recommendations that, that you can, that summarizes that information. So like I said, I'm not gonna read it to you. But when do you all think that we might be ready to do a work session to talk about this and really start looking at the long-range plan and seeing what we're gonna need? Maybe a couple of months? August, September? Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I'll be unavailable.
With Miss Lauren.
Mid-August, probably not September.
I'll ask Summer if she will send out a survey and, and everybody can look at their calendars and maybe come up with a couple of dates that we should, let's do some long-range, long-range planning and talk about these things a little bit. Okay.
I will say, if it needs to be in September, that's fine too. We're talking a couple of hours.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
And a, but July may work better for you.
No, it will not either. I have attention, summer school. So July is a no-go for me. I'm turning my phone off.
I'm turning my email off.
Give Lauren time.
Okay, let's see. We did have some other committees, but that was Sean and Andy said they're not here, so we'll, we'll try to get an update on those. Any, any new information next month. Okay, moving right along to old business. The first item is the proposed public meeting room policy, and Summer gave you a little slip of paper that Manny wanted to add, we talked about it this morning, Manny wanted to add a little statement about signs, exterior signs and things like that being posted on the library property. So hopefully you've had a chance to, to read that and to read the public meeting room policy.
And I do want to say, I don't want to, that was me. So remember I mentioned my lack of creativity? That's a perfect example. My total creativity. This was actually brought up by Andy on Friday, and it's a very valid point as far as exterior signs on library property.
The last sentence about responsible to collect the signs and all be defined.
I agree. The whole tally, everywhere.
Yeah.
Everywhere, on every road. Because I'm that person that get, that takes the day off work after, the day after the election, and I go collect all the signs. So that's.
So do I have a motion to set the proposed public meeting room policy with the addition of what Manny has submitted about the sign?
So moved.
At the second? Second?
So.
All right, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries for the public meeting room policy. The next item is the proposed display and digital signage policy. Do I have a motion to approve this policy? So moved. At the second? Is there any discussion? Discussion on this policy? All in favor?
I'm all right.
Opposed? Under new business, the first item on this, Manny would like for us to vote on this tonight because that goes into effect. Oh, no, sorry, wrong one. Building closure schedule over twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Office occupancy discussion, and we talked about this a couple of different times, and it's relating to, at this time, two organizations, but there may be other organizations in the future, so, and we're gonna just open up forward to this, to the board to talk about and how you feel about the office policy.
If I may, just for a moment, so I, over the, in the month of May, I went back up New, New England to visit family for Memorial Day weekend, and on one of my excursions, I visited my own library. And when I left that library to move here, I told them I do not want any parties, and I'm not, that's me, I don't like that stuff. So, of course, when I arrived there on a Friday morning, they had a big party for me because I told them I didn't want that. But what was great was not only did I have staff that I worked with in Foxborough, I also had other directors, other colleagues from Massachusetts and Rhode Island visit. And of course, their questions were, what's it like, like, you know, life in Tennessee being a library director? But one of the subjects I brought up was a place to stay and be your way of life. And one of the directors, who is a director of a city of a hundred thousand plus, as far as a population, their immediate response was, I wish I had something like that in my library. And then they all started talking and telling me stories that from a very small library, has a population of ten thousand and under, two city libraries, envious of what we have here. And I had a conversation with the director for a county nearby Nashville, and she's hoping for something like that because her staff have run into issues where they're trying to assist, because that is our mission, but they don't have the services right there. I think this is a, and this is just my, my thought here, is this is just a wonderful service that we have here. And I think it, it took, hearing it from colleagues that I expect and have been doing this longer than I have, and I think it just, it hit me then, that this is, both organizations are wonderful services.
Did we present language at the last meeting? On the?
We did, but I think before I even work on anything else, I just wanted to get a vote from the board to move forward with working on MOUs and other documents that accompany that, because if I'm working on that and you vote no, then I just, it was time that I could have spent doing something else. So I think first and foremost, I just want the thumbs up or the thumbs down from the board, so then I can move forward.
Policy and the MOUs.
Well, I think it's a, I think it's a great thing, and you all already know that because I spoke on it the last time I was here. Just what a resource it is for, for the people of the community, for it to be right here, even if they decide to move elsewhere. If they even just wanted to leave one person, one, you know, that we can have that resource here in the library. And then they can say then, okay, well, you can go here and get more resources or get more help or do whatever. I just think it's very valuable for us to have those organizations here at the library. I mean, it's, this is a community building. Taxpayers pay for it. Some of them don't like it, but that's okay. I've made some of them mine for months now, so.
I think you can look at it from a selfish perspective. The time for staffing and getting from already against the wall of not being able to add additional. If they can facilitate the, 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 the need not to do work by the staff, it's going to be an advantage for us, not only the, a library, but the clients, people who are looking for those services. Because, I mean, people who actually go to go with their organization and looking for help, so they're gonna, they're gonna put someone, they're gonna have someone. The staff, which may not be totally capable of answering their needs, or someone to, who has the background and the, the commitment to maybe do the best for them. So personally, I think it makes sense. We just have to wrap our way around how do we manage that from the library and.
Yeah, I think the, I think kind of reiterate some of the points that were made last time as well, but I think the main thing to consider is, is the the value, the efficacy of these groups. It's that we can create a policy that can be equally applied so that we make sure there's no favoritism or anything, any sort of grounds or possibility of something that doesn't smell right, so to speak, in terms of a relationship between the library and somebody's favorite organization. So I think that's, that's really the consideration that needs to be really, really adeptly handled with proper language and concise language in terms of we are going to have a memorandum with you, organization, or as according to our policy, that allows us to have a memorandum with another organization. I think that's kind of where, where I kind of come down on it. I, I don't want the li, I don't want the library exposed to any sort of legal issue where if something doesn't smell right and lawyers get involved, then the first thing they're gonna look at is what documents do we have? And what language do we have that's clear and precise on that issue? So I think out of an abundance of caution, that's, that's kind of what my two cents are on the policy. I don't particularly have an issue with organizations being here, but we need to make sure we do it in a very clear, very easy to communicate way that is completely above approach.
Any other question? Anybody want to make a motion?
I will do that. So moved. Let's, let's work on, let's let Manny work on, or did we have a committee?
Yeah.
That was working on, so I move that we proceed with this committee and let them work on the memorandum and get all that, and the policy. We keep those groups here. That's my motion. Proceed. For you to proceed.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Now we'll go on. Building closure schedule for December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, Manny's.
So that day falls on a Sunday, and as of the week of July seventeenth will be open on Sunday.
Yes.
So we have previously been closed on New Year's Eve, so that is my motion for this evening, if we could have the building closed on New Year's Eve.
Do I have a motion? Through being closed on Sunday, twelve thirty-one, so moved. All in favor? Any opposed?
Let's have a New Year's Eve. Well, hopefully we won't have the same thing happen this year, Christmas, so it's not gonna happen on December twenty-fourth.
Yeah. Okay, proposed library hotspot policy. This is new business. We won't be voting on this one tonight. It'll be on next month's agenda. But is, are there any things to discuss or any corrections that you might have had? The only thing I had a question about was, is it necessary to have? The only thing I had a question about was, um, is it necessary to have the application in the policy? Or is that more like a procedure kind of thing, you know, usually applications you might need to tweak? That's a question for Manny and Anthony today.
I admit, I kind of handed this off to others, so, um, Cynthia, did you look at it as well?
I did review it. I, I really liked your recommendation separating it out. Policy and having, well, we called contract, not policy.
And for the bullet that says if they're not returned after two uh, late returns, a number of days, or is that just one day late? You, because you get an annual suspension after two late returns?
I want to say that's one of the reasons, because this is so much more in-depth and has so much more responsibility placed on the user. We need them to see that you can't go by Canada and not expect to get roaming journeys. You know, we've got to put that in there and make sure that they have said that they've read it. If we hand them just this and that's not attached, then they can say, well, I was never given it, I was never seen it, I just said that I got it. So that's why those two are married together.
It's fine, I just, you know.
Well, no, it took me, it took me a second, and it wasn't until you mentioned that. We've also got to state very clearly, because this is a differential, differentiation from our regular fines as well. Certain things happen if they are not returned, that are outside the other circulating materials. So my thinking is that's why they were together. Nine times out of ten, though, Cynthia is right, we would want to separate a pure process if it was just, you know, you agree to return the book. Well, that's covered by the library card, but this is a completely unique situation.
And I'm assuming we don't check out laptops anymore, that's why that was taken out, too.
So if a patron has, has checked out a hotspot and is late one day to return it, that's strike one. If they check out a hotspot again and they're one day late returning it, then they are suspended here.
Cynthia, can you speak to that? You actually give them a one-day grace period.
So they have two days, so it'd be two days.
How many people check out hotspots?
But I have to pull the exact numbers.
Five, ten, one hundred.
No, I would say we circulate about twelve a week.
Week.
And Cynthia, correct me if it's summer too, because you work patron services. This time of the year, with summer, here with vacation, you do see an uptick in hotspot rentals?
It's interesting, it's more holidays, other than.
Really?
Is there a need for more hotspots?
I don't think so.
Okay.
You think that's because the kids are at home?
Any other comments? And we'll vote on that one next month. Proposed library programming policy. Corrections or suggestions on that? Sorry. Go to hotspots. Okay, little new run. Proposed internet safety policy. On the first paragraph, uh, the CPL users access the internet at their own discretion, which could contain material, materials that may find offensive and inappropriate. I bet it's reading awkward, Cynthia. Uh, I, I think the CPL users access the internet at their own discretion, period. Yeah, and then whatever you might need to do to the rest of that sentence. That was the only one, yeah, I just felt like that very small. And on the second page, you mentioned computer worms or viruses. Is malware different than worms? Is that something that needs to be mentioned, that's just, Judith, that's just a thought?
You want to put a blanket statement, you might change it to something like invasive or offensive software, virus-type software. If you don't want to, we could Google the term, that would probably be better.
Any other thoughts?
Point that out again.
Yes, it's on the second page, and you've got the, that's half of the page, you've got one, two, three, four bullets. It's the third bullet. Yeah.
Yeah, you could just rewrite that to say malicious software.
Malicious software.
I like that word.
Why didn't we strike out the children's area?
We, we have no, no computers in the children's area except for the, um, catalog and the AW, the OPAO machine.
You can get on the internet, right, in the children's area?
No, it's locked down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the next one, proposed public comments policy. Manny would like us to vote on this one tonight, since that is, goes into effect July one.
And, um, Attorney Garrett for the county has looked this over, and, so Craig Garrett.
And the only thing that I saw on that was just a misphrased word. Speak. Speak. Second, uh, second, very, very second one to. I saw one that goes.
I have a, uh, I guess kind of a question possibly, and you could revise slightly. Uh, the, the title, chapter number three hundred, the State of Tennessee, amendment that was included, talks about, um, on all items that are, remains of the items on the agenda for that meeting. I was thinking, maybe, would it be worth revising slightly that sentence strictly um, to say, just flat out say, agenda items?
And isn't it even actionable agenda items?
Yes, yeah, they do use the word actionable.
Which kind of limits it even.
Yeah.
Or define, I would define it as a better way to say, defines it even further.
I was thinking of the, the county commission meetings, they, they just say agenda items. I mean, it wouldn't, it might not be a bad idea just to line up with them, and that's an importance of this, the State of Tennessee.
But, but they also give them an opportunity. Items not on the, the main.
Yeah.
But that's not, the new law doesn't, I think the new law superseded that, right? Like, you don't have to. Our, our policy could just be according to the new law. My understanding.
I'm leaving at six thirty, I have to go to a few of the hopes up.
Oh, yeah.
For this, Jeff? Should, could you do a quick vote before you?
Yes.
And we'll make the amended changes.
Make the amended changes, okay, do I have a motion that we approve this public policy?
I make a motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, motion here's.
Ah, the laws on the back of the page.
Friends funding FY twenty-three twenty-four.
Yes, so attached to the packet is the upcoming fiscal year, and our requests, our annual requests. Friends. It's a little deceiving, the, we included the rider and resident, so that's included. And then the Brandon, the rebranding is continuing from last, last year. This is the final year that we're handing.
How much do we request last year?
I think it was a, just over eleven, but I need to, I don't know if the top.
Eleven thousand?
It was just over eleven thousand.
And so they're expecting this large increase?
Oh, hold on, I thought you were talking about the rebranding project.
Oh, no, no. Total.
It's like eighty-three.
Last year, a hundred twenty-five thousand.
Well, there was the wish list, which was twenty-seven of that.
Right, the initial request was ninety-five thousand.
Okay.
And then we funded the additional.
This should not include the wish list.
Yeah. This does include the LSTA, um, matching grant funds. This includes, um, the rebranding, like he said. The rider in residence. And all of those kind of inflated.
So you guys show this picture.
Okay, and we have added the request for the hometown welcome program. Um, what is it in, um, in June of last year? The friends made us aware of this program, and it's where, um, all new residents to Blount County receive a little, um, mailer. And in it, we have a shared advertisement for the library and for the friends. And, um, we truly believe that that is some of the reason why we're seeing such a large increase in our card, card registration. So, um, this was not in last year's request. It is in this year, so that's an additional bump up again. And last, like, we've also got, uh, department furniture that wasn't in there, so that's, but, um, our patron services really needs some new, um, chairs and items.
The hometown welcoming program, is that mailed from here, or does that go to the county or who mails?
The Daily Times handles that program.
Yeah.
My, my questions, uh, you guys show your control to the friend, and then you guys did something to do that. How, how does the process work?
Normally, the board here would vote, and then it would go to the friends meeting, which is next Tuesday, uh, for a vote.
But they, but the friends are aware of what's on.
We are now.
They are now, yeah.
That's why you come to the paper, right?
I mean, some, some of these are ongoing, you know, your, your, well, now we have mini-con again, but the seed library, the lettuce for Santa, or to Santa, um, that have, yeah, the hot summer, the concerts, yeah.
And you guys vote on it at the net at your, yeah, maybe somewhere at a time in the future, a little heads up, maybe.
Oh, we're good.
Okay.
I'll, I'll have, I'll send it out to my board in the next year or two.
Okay.
Okay, so they have time.
Okay.
We thought it was going to be higher, and we're fine.
I know. Why we're having this session.
I also just want to clarify, because it got cut in the copy that you have. That bottom statement says foundation funds are handled outside of this request, and they will carry over until the project is completed and that project is zeroed out, and zeroed out as per the memorandum that we've entered between the friends, the library board, and the foundation.
Any other questions? I have a motion that we approve the friends funding request. Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? With the yes. Yes. Uh, the next one is friends funding request for rider and resident.
So that's this current fiscal year, and that's the payment for our new rider and resident. And the Daily Times did a terrific article a couple of weeks ago, uh, during that, I think it was on their Sunday edition of our new rider and resident.
And that's just the month of? June.
June, yeah.
All right, do I have a motion to approve this rider and residence request? Friends? Do I have a second? All in favor? I'm. Any, no opposed, you can't oppose, can you? Okay, the last one there, uh, friends funding request for hometown welcome program. Just heard Anthony kind of explain that. Do I have a motion that we approve this request?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Passes. If anybody has any, any more member have anything to say or?
Oh, I did have one comment, the new website. Um, I got on today for the county, and so the library's website, maybe too. I think you guys had a post, like, things were downs, under construction and stuff, and so then it went, look, it looks really good. And I think it's a good opportunity for you guys to get stuff looking this day and age and out there, so that, along with social media, has been amazing. Um, so please let the purity know over the past few months, it's been wonderful.
Can, can I give a shout out? So that is, that is the artwork of Savannah McHarter, our online services coordinator, and Beth Hall. And as a team, to include Summer and Manny and myself, we make sure that it has the several edits and, um, looks good, but specifically Beth and Savannah. If you think so, I will make sure they do.
Any other comments, board member? Do I have a motion for adjourned meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Anybody opposed? All in favor? Aye. Thank you all.